Item number one. Item two. Item three. Item four.
I have a question on item four.
Yes, sir.
Do I understand it correctly that if they get a building permit within 90 days, that the rent will be reduced all the way back to February?
Correct.
Even if it goes out to 2015?
Correct. Thank you, man. Okay. Item five.
This is the large federal grant that we're using out at Lake Park.
Did you want to take that and have you go over that a little bit just for public awareness?
It was a good deal because...
I wouldn't mind.
We...
They were our TJ that kind of brought it to our attention initially. So it's...
We'll pull that. Just kind of go for second round of roads.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilman Gilmore.
Don't thank me.
For bringing that to the city's...
It better be right.
For bringing that to the city's...
Don't thank me till it's done. Sorry, Leroy. I apologize.
I'd like to thank Councilman Gilmore for bringing that to the city's attention and also for city staff for putting the package together and getting it approved. That's all I want to say.
All right, then I'm gonna pull that and I'll just let you go over it, Paul.
Okay.
Item six.
This is one you've seen before, but the extension this time is for a period of six years. It's not actually up yet. It's not up till September. But I guess they want to get a little advance closure on how long they can keep the building. And it is a little bit different in that this is actually privately owned property that's being utilized by the church. Most of the variance is in this case been for the church, but when the church actually owned the property, so that's a little bit of a distinction.
Well, in two, only it wasn't most of the time. Building a, another facility.
Usually on-site.
Yeah, on-site, and those were just temporary till they could get a building.
And they may be trying to save up the build somewhere, but...
Probably not on this site.
To our knowledge, it's not on that site.
This was a strip mall with a church in it, and the strip mall came to me and asked for it. I'd have a big problem with it. If the church owned the building, then that'd be one thing, but we have no way of knowing that these buildings, that this space is being used as event space, because that's the other business that's in there is event planning. We have no idea what's in that space during the week. Are we going to be able to track that? Will we be able to follow up on it? Do we have to have a staff member there watching it every day?
Well, six years, six years seems excessive.
Yeah.
That was kind of my question too.
Plus the two on the existing, so it's eight.
What means, what does church use mean? That wasn't really clear to me, what constitutes church use. Anybody?
Well, I think what they had in mind was the church that's actually utilizing the facility there today, not some other new church or some other organization that would happen to rent a facility. So I think it was limited to, what was the name of the, I can't remember the name of the church itself.
Bethel.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be St. Phillips or somebody doing it. It would be Bethel. What they use it for, whatever they need to use it for.
Well, in my, I think there have been two, maybe three of these since I've been watching council, not just being on council. And I know it's not legally binding or anything like that, but any of the ones that we've done for churches, the churches have all said, they've all said, "We just need it for a period of time while we generate the revenue together so that we can build the facility." I don't think we've ever had a church not say that they had an intent to build this facility later on. I don't have any of that here. That I'm aware of. Is there a conversation put forward by the church that they would build in a couple of years?
Not that I'm aware of. Cleve, do you have anything about that?
Well, someone did discuss whether or not they're going to, until such time they build a classroom, but then they also recognize that once their time's up, if they haven't done that, they either renew it or say, "Oh, yeah," or the buildings go away. In this particular case, it's kind of a hybrid because the owner of the building is actually the pastor of the church. So I'm not sure how it all works, the dynamics, but at least it's out for weddings, not a big, but it is for church use only classrooms. So if the church were to go away, it would go away, and we assume that the temporarys would go away as well.
Can we build that into the language? I want that built in. And I don't, I don't think I'm a fan of the six years either, because that takes it to eight years for the existing buildings.
We wouldn't recommend that for almost anything.
So would we want to bring this back rewarded instead of trying to do it, piece mail it tonight?
Might be cleaner that way, because that way you see exactly what you can do. General direction for what you're looking for, and then we can amend the variance.
How you all want to do it. You can either try to do it out there, but sometimes when we do it out there, we get bogged down in this and that and i's and t's and don't get it exactly. So maybe if you could give, if you want, if you want to give staff some general direction as to what you would be more likely, or you would be likely to consider, you could do that and then, I guess, table it for a specific time and find out from staff how long it would take, how long they think it would take to get that and that specific time and then...
My one thought about doing it in peer versus out there is I don't know if anybody has come to speak on the issue, is not sitting in his room at this time to hear that discussion.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to do it back here. I meant, totally do it out there.
But the direction of the staff.
Yeah, I meant that too. Do it out there. That's what I meant. That's why I say, "No, do it out there."
Let's do a discussion out there, I think.
That's good. Okay, item seven. And then item eight. I did ask this part on just because we did get the RFPs back. I just wanted everybody to see what they are, basically see them and look at the differences in them. Like you saw, they're ranging from 16,000 to 26,000 basically, and lots of different things in there. But two, if you had any questions, if you looked at them, that you could ask staff to clarify or anything like that, if you want. Those are all for, no, no action needed to be taken on this other than for you to see it and if you want to ask any questions.
Is it possible to go into closed session prior to item eight?
I'll take something that's on the closed session agenda.
Correct.
At order, yeah, you can do that if you want. It's up to you all.
No problem.
Okay, which one do you want to do? Which one, I'll take it...
Number two in closed session.
Okay.
You want to do that before eight?
Yes.
So between seven and eight.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Counsel?
The memorandum under order reports. That document is to a number of people that are no longer on the council and different positions are being hailed, so we could get that addressed to the right people.
We just noticed that, sir, and we'll get that corrected.
On the toll?
Yeah.
Well, no, but it's February 11th, 2014.
But that council...
Thank you.
Just in the machine.
That's all I have. Anything else, counsel? Julie?
Yes, sir.
Liz? Paul? I think we're done.
We got the mayor.
Okay.
It is 7 o'clock. We do have a call. We'll call the city council meeting in order. First item on the agenda is the invocation given by Councilman Ferguson and the pledge both American Texas flag led by Councilman Durham.
Please rise. A moment of silence for prayer.
Thank you.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Is the comment in there, in the text?
It's not there.
It's not there either?
Look at his.
Huh?
Look at his.
Next item on the agenda is visitor assistance form. At this time, any person with... Before we do that, I want to recognize somebody very special. We have a certain visitor with us tonight. I saw him walk in at the last minute. We're certainly glad to have Mayor Gene Carey in attendance with us tonight. Mayor, it's good to see you, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. Yes, he is a special visitor. Better watch Rudy, Mayor, he's... Next item is visitor assistance form. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. I did not have anyone speak. No cards were filled out. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I did want to pull item number five. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve the consent agenda is written with the exclusion of item five.
Having a motion, my counsel, you want to approve the item as presented with the exception of item five, seconded by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is approval of a memorandum of agreement, statement of work, and reimbursement agreement for Federal Lands Access Program Project Lewisville Lake Park improvements in the estimated amount of $773,745, which includes $70,340 for contingencies, approval of a budget project in the amount of $800,000, approval of an appropriation from park development funds in the amount of $650,000, and authorization for the city manager and his designated need to execute the agreements. The Central Federal Lands Highway Division of the Federal Highway Administration in cooperation with United States Army Corps of Engineers and the City of Louisville have, are proposing improvements to Lewisville Lake Parks, which include renovating, deteriorating roadway, infrastructure, and parking lot, providing hike, bike trail, linking regional public transportation to recreation amenities, and improving safety and ADA access. The total estimated cost is $3,911,754 with a local match of $773,745. To fund the budget project of $800,000 in appropriation in the amount of $650,000 from Park Development Fund 374 is recommended. Already appropriated funding in the amount of $150,000 is available in the Trails Capital Project. Mr. Keane, would you kind of just highlight on that a little bit and let the public know what all this is?
Well, again, Mayor, that is a grant from the Federal Lands Access Program. This is a program administered by the Federal Highway Administration, and basically it's designed to provide funding for better access to property owned by the federal government. And obviously, Lake Park is a piece of property owned by the federal government, so when Councilman Gilmore brought this program to our attention, we did a little research and rapidly got an application into the Federal Highway Administration. And that application has been processed, and it looks like we're very close to obtaining that grant. The item here is to set up a budget for it and to approve certain documents, signature so that we can finalize the grant. And we'll be providing almost $4 million of roadways, trails, and parking lot improvements in Lake Park at a cost directly to the city of only $773,000, so it's a good example of cost sharing with another governmental jurisdiction and gets a lot more done in Lake Park than Bob had planned on doing any time in the near future. So he's done a good job at shepherding this through the federal grant process, and it looks like we're good to go.
Sounds great. And Councilman Vaughn, I think you'd made mention earlier. You want to give special recognition to a few people?
Yes, sir. As I did in the workshop, I'd like to thank Councilman Gilmore for bringing this to the city's attention. I would also like to thank the city's staff for the outstanding job they did in getting this through the process in such a short time period. Thanks to all.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I'd like to say just a couple of small things.
Right ahead.
This was actually brought to my attention by a resident, so, folks, those of us sitting up here, we do listen. And Ms. Jennifer Lind reached out to me. She had noticed this online and gave me the information. I was able to just carry the water and help make the conversation happen. So if you see this kind of stuff, you think it's of interest to the city or might be, you know, those of us who are sitting up here, we need your eyes and ears, so I really appreciate folks reaching out to me and letting me know. So I'm really excited about the project.
We'll make a motion?
I'd like to move to approve, sir.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Gilmore.
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number six, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code's Section 4-28, temporary structures and uses regarding an additional temporary building for classroom use to be located at 2680 MacArthur Boulevard and extending the variance of two existing temporary classrooms as requested by Danny McDaniel, the property owner. Bethel Dallas Church of Louisville desires to locate an additional temporary classroom on the existing Champion Center property located at 2680 MacArthur Boulevard. On September 3rd, 2012, a variance request was granted by city council to locate two temporary classrooms on the south rear of the campus, screening them from view along MacArthur Boulevard and Vista Ridge Mall Drive frontages. The variance was granted for a two-year period which expires on September 3rd, 2014. An engineering site plan is not required. The site is compliant with the general development ordinance requirements as the Champion Center a facility to host celebration events and is leased by Bethel Dallas Church for worship services and classes. The City of Louisville Building Code does not allow portable buildings to be placed in the city for purposes of this type other than on LISD property. The Champion Center is requesting to replace the temporary classrooms for a maximum period of six years and extending the existing temporary classroom variance for that same time period. Reputation of staff has counsel considered the request for the variance, provided that the temporary classrooms be used for church purposes only and be removed in six years or until such time prior, prior should the Champion Center build a new building or addition, whichever takes place first.
Councilman Tierney.
Mayor, we talked about this extensively in the back. I'm going to propose that we give staff some direction and I guess essentially table this item, have it reworked up. I don't think it's going to have the support to pass it as it is. I think one thing that I, one issue that I have with it is the six-year time period. I would like to see that reduced. And I think Councilman Gilmore, did you have, you had something else on this, didn't you?
Well, I, I think that this would be, this would not be a discussion or an issue if the facility was actually owned by the church. We've had several churches over the years who have asked for temporary facilities with the statement that they would be building out more permanent facilities over time. And we've worked with those organizations. What I have a challenge with here is that we have a specifically, a business that for every day of the week except Sunday, that business is a events facility, so it rents out this space. And if an events facility were to come to us, I think this body would have a hard time approving temporary buildings for an events business. We would probably say no, because we have a building ordinance and we want quality development here. Now, that being said, how do we monitor this? How do we watch it? How, you know, is it being used for church services and only for church services? I don't think we, as a, as a city, can maintain that, nor should we have to monitor that every single day. So that's going to be a real challenge for me to, to do any type of approval for this type of facility, because there is no promise of building permanent space. There's no promise that that church will not find a building and go ahead and start having services somewhere else, in which case we've got temporary buildings with a local business. And that, that I don't, I don't want to see.
Any other discussion?
Just a few comments. Most of my, most of what we heard in the workshop pretty much echoes my own thoughts before I got here. There was some confusion about this extending to eight years. It's, it's not the language in there, but six years is still... If you've got a vision that you have a need for six years, I think you need to be doing more with that vision than just asking for temporary buildings. And so I have that same concern with the length of time. I think I would like to see not only the length of time reduced, but some specific plan or requirement to do something besides keep those buildings there and come back and ask for another extension and another extension. So somebody who thinks they need something for six years ought to be thinking about the other plans that they have besides a temporary building. That's probably my number one concern. I would probably have that concern even if it were a church-operated, full-time church facility, that six years is too long. So that's my thoughts.
Any other discussion? A motion?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table to when?
March 3rd. March 3rd.
March 3rd. And before we do, I guess, do you have the, do you have the instructions you need, staff?
What I've got is to negotiate something that's less than six years, probably substantially less, and try to identify some sort of a long-range plan, if they have one, for what they're going to do out into the future. And end game. End game, yeah.
And some language that hooks usage of those buildings specifically to the existing church.
And goes away if it's...
Goes away if they go away, yeah.
Okay.
Go with you need.
Anything else? Yeah, unless there's anything else.
Anybody else, have anything else? Okay, now, have a motion to table to when, I'm sorry?
March 3rd.
Have a motion to table to March 3rd by Councilman Ferguson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven is consideration of a final plaid of the Shops of Castle Hills addition Lot 115, Block A, a 48.0 acre parcel designated light industrial located on the southwest corner of Sam Rayburn Tollway and Josie Lane with one associated variance as requested by Kate's Clark Associates LLP requesting or representing the property owner. The subject plaid is located within Castle Hills in the City of Louisville extraterritorial jurisdiction and is to be developed in accordance with the 1996 Bright Farms Agreement. The subject property is being platted for the purpose of constructing a Kroger grocery store in furniture commercial uses. The City of Louisville is supplying the water to the Denton County Freshwater District for this development. The proposed public water line within the subdivision connects to an existing master water meter located on Lot 11 of the subdivision. The requested variance is to allow a 10-foot wide grass-only area in lieu of a 15-foot wide grass-only area for the water line easement. As a condition for this variance request, the property owner will be responsible for reimbursement of paving costs over the water line easement area in the event that a water line repair is required. The Planning Zoning Commission recommends approval of the final plaid and variance in its February 4th, 2014 meeting. Prediction is that council approved the plaid as set forth. Councilman Durham? Oh, excuse me, we did have one card fill... Okay. Next item is item eight is review of responses to executive search services requests for proposal number 14-14, direction to staff as requested by myself. Counsel directed staff to solicit proposals for executive search services at the January 6th meeting, and RFP was advertised with a due date February 3rd. Eight firms have responded. I simply put this on here because this was the only way that staff could disseminate the information to council that they had received back on February 3rd, and opened. And I wanted to give everybody the opportunity to look at it, to see what it was, because we had no idea. None of us had any idea what the cost might be, what all it entailed, or what all it was performed. This way, it gave everybody the opportunity to look at that, review those, and then if they had any questions on how the RFPs were submitted, or not how they're submitted, but the information that was submitted with the RFP, if anybody had any questions on that, they could have gotten back with staff, give them the opportunity to get staff to ask some questions. So there was no action to be taken on this. This was basically just for information purposes only. Okay, down to reports. Bob?
No, sir.
Chief?
No, sir.
Linda? New hair, boy scared me there for a minute. Whoa.
I do want to invite the council to come to our open house for the Wellness Works Health Center. Our new clinic on Thursday will be having an open house from 11:00 to 2:00, and then again from 4:00 to 7:00. And I put an invitation in your box, so it has the directions. It's on Rock Brook, and we would love to see you come out and see how wonderful the clinic is. We've been getting lots of very positive feedback from our employees.
Good. Chief?
No, sir.
Carol?
Nana?
Brenda?
Lee?
Ms. Backus?
No.
Councilman Durham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
Just briefly, Chief, I want to congratulate our Lewisville Police Department. We were just received the award of a recognized law enforcement agency from the Texas Police Chiefs Association. This had a very intensive overview of 165 best business practices for Texas law enforcement, which our department did exemplary, is what I've been told. So really, congratulations to you, and more importantly, congratulations to all the department head and all the folks that had to pull together to get that award. So thanks. Appreciate your hard work, Chief. That's all I have, Mayor.
Mr. Keen?
No, sir.
Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, Mayor.
No, I'm going to skip you now. Councilman Vaughn? No, I'm kidding. Go ahead. Well, shocked you, didn't you? I'm waiting, really.
Well, I know when I've been insulted. So MCL Grand, we've got stage shows. One woman show called Sweater Curse running February 20th through the 23rd, five performances presented by Our Productions Theater Company. We have a concert coming up this Friday night from Lewisville Lake Symphony entitled An Evening with Revel and Mendelson. It's starting at 7:30. That will also feature the winner of the Vernell, annual Vernell Gregg Young Artist Competition. So that's 7:30 at the MCL Grand. And then the following night, Saturday night at 8:00 PM, we have Two Bit Palomino, who has won Texas Songwriter of the Year Award two of the last three years. Should be a very interesting show, 8:00 PM, MCL Grand. They'll also be conducting Two Bit Palomino, a songwriter challenge, earlier in the day, starting at 9:00. It'll be over by 3:00 o'clock. There is limited availability, so if somebody has an interest in that, they need to go online and make registrations. Of course, Friday nights, we still have the Acoustic Fridays jams, and so encouraging anybody who might enjoy that. It's free. Go check it out. Art exhibits, LISD art show continues. Now we're doing the middle schools. That'll be in the gallery through the 24th. And then it'll be followed by the elementary schools on the west side of town, and that will be through March 17th. And the gallery is open Tuesday through Saturday, 1:00 to 5:00 PM, and also open any time when there's a performance in the theater. And that was as fast as I could do it.
Good job, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, the only thing I'd like to remind everybody is that early voting starts tomorrow for the March primary, and it goes from the 18th through the 28th for the early voting March primary. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor? Julie? Also, once again, we appreciate you being here and everything you do each and every day, sir. Thank you, sir. And I want to remind everyone that tomorrow, we actually have our tri-city, City of Lewisville, Highland Village, and Flower Mountain have their joint chamber luncheon with the State of the Cities address, and the mayors of Flower Mountain and Highland Village, I think, are going to be there. Unfortunately, I'll be able to attend. I have a family situation that takes priority, so I will be unable to attend. But Mayor Pro Tim Vaughn has graciously stepped up and going to fill in in my position there. And Ray, we appreciate all you do, sir. Once again, I apologize, I can't be there, but I feel I need to be someplace else. So, thank you very much, sir. And thank everyone. We hope you all come out and attend it. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, we're now convened back into closed session. Regular session. Is there any action to be taken, counsel? Make a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Vaughn, seconded by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.